Okay, so, um, welcome to the 10th Town Meeting Members of Town of Arlington. Ready, welcome to the 10th session of our 2021 Annual Town Meeting. It's Wednesday, the 26th. Let's start off with our star spangled banner, please. Thank you very much. Okay, tonight is our 10th, like I just said, our 10th Night of Town Meeting. We still have, including 43, I believe 12 more articles to go. This evening, we have three more motions to get in on Article 43. We've been giving all of the proponents of the article itself. They asked for 10 minutes and the movements of all the articles got seven minutes each. After this, I'm going to ask that we try and adhere to our voluntary four-minute rule for our floor speeches. Right now, we have about 30, 35, I think someone said, people on the list to speak. If we give them each four minutes, that'll be about two hours worth of speaking. I anticipate we're probably going to spend most of tonight on 43. And when we get to it, after go through the pump and all the motions are amended, I'm going to give you what my thought process is and how we're going to vote on this. I've been giving a lot of thought to it. Okay, Chairman of the Board, Mr. Stephen DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting as set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021, at 8:00 PM.
Second. If you object to doing so, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. We have one person objecting. Looks like we're back on next Wednesday. Okay, so does anyone have any, oh, let's close the check-in attendance voting at this point. We're up to 224 members. Does anyone have any announcements or resolutions? If they do, Ms. Kelleher, do you have an announcement or a resolution?
Yes, I have an announcement, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Karen Kelleher, Precinct 5. I'm also a member of Arlington's Housing Plan Implementation Committee, or HPIC. As you may know, the HPIC is a volunteer advisory committee appointed by the redevelopment board to advise the town during preparation and implementation of Arlington's housing production plan. This year, the town, led by the Department of Planning and Community Development, and advised by the HPIC, is updating the five-year 2016 housing production plan. The existing and updated five-year housing plans address important topics to the town, many resonating at this year's town meeting, including strategies for creation and preservation of affordable housing and for increasing housing diversity. This includes housing for all household types, including but not limited to seniors and families. Having an updated housing plan will inform the work of the various town bodies who work on housing and help the town advance the Arlington Affordable Housing Trust Fund established by town meeting last fall. It will also guide the town to develop a range of community-informed strategies for how Arlington can meet our local housing needs. The plan is funded by the Community Development Block Program and will be facilitated by Barrett Planning Group LLC and the Horsley-Witten Group. The planning process will engage many town departments, boards, commissions, organizations, and residents, and we hope you. A clear, equitable, and transparent public process is critical to this plan. Everyone in the community is invited to participate, and everyone's voice matters as we seek solutions to address Arlington's housing challenges. We hope that everyone here will mark their calendars for the first virtual public workshop for the plan. So if you will, please right now take out a pen or open your digital calendars and save this date, Wednesday, June 9th, at 6:30 PM. Zoom information is posted already to the town's calendar on the front page of arlingtonma.gov. This time was specifically selected so that town meeting members may still participate, even if town meeting is still going on. Again, that date is Wednesday, June 9th, at 6:30 PM. At this workshop, the consultants will present data and information gathered through research and stakeholder interviews. Most importantly, though, there will be ample time for discussion. In addition, a community questionnaire is open through Friday, May 28th, on the HPIC webpage, which can be found under the Boards and Committees page on the town website. Other engagement opportunities will include at least two community meetings this fall, an online implementation survey, and a joint presentation to the Select Board and Arlington redevelopment board. In addition, I note that on July 13th at 7:00 PM, the town is holding a community conversation titled, "Who Can Live Here, Who Decides, and Why?", to frame conversations about fair housing in Arlington. The town and members of the HPIC will be promoting all the events and meetings regarding this plan through a variety of channels, which include the town website, town notice emails, on social media, outreach to stakeholder groups and organizations. We would also like to encourage you, town meeting members, to share these engagement opportunities with your constituents and other interested stakeholders. More information about the housing plan is available on the HPIC page in the news section of the town website and linked to from the town's Facebook and Twitter pages. Please join us for the June 9th and the future housing plan events. We hope to see you and residents from your neighborhoods there. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Skell. Maybe we'll be out by June 9th and we won't have to rush through your event. Does anyone else have any announcements or resolutions? Seeing none, I call for any reports of committees. Seeing none. We have for us Article 43. So we're going to restore the debate from Article 43. And that will bring up our reserve speaker list. And the next, once we get that up, the next speaker on the list is going to be Winell Evans, who's going to introduce her motions. Ms. Evans, you have the floor.
Thank you. Winell Evans, Precinct 14. I move my amendments on Article 43, which have been previously delivered to town meeting. I am in support of ADUs, but not as proposed in Article 43, which would make Arlington much more permissive than any other community in the greater Boston area. My amendments address two of the deficiencies of the article. The First Amendment seeks to specify the duration of short-term rental, a term which our bylaw does not define. Airbnb currently shows 28 available stays in Arlington, but there are only two short-term rentals registered with the town, despite the fact that registration is required. This speaks to me of how difficult it might be for inspectional services to enforce a nebulous, quote-unquote, "short-term regulation", and I believe it will make their jobs much easier if that term is defined as regards ADUs. I've suggested a minimum of six months, a rental duration that is longer than transient occupancy. In popular markets such as Arlington, short-term rentals can be more profitable than long-term ones. When ADUs serve as short-term rentals, it undermines the objective of adding smaller dwellings to the local housing supply and creating housing that's more affordable. And a reminder, neither unit has to be rented. The non-owner unit can be occupied by a family member, a caregiver, a nanny, or a friend at no rent. The minimum rental period would only apply if a unit were rented. In contrast to Article 43, almost all other communities where ADUs are allowed to specify no lodgers or require a family member to occupy the ADU. The Second Amendment seeks to require owner occupancy of one unit, again, as almost every nearby community does. The 2019 ADU proposal drafted by the redevelopment board made owner residency a requirement and tied it to the certificate of occupancy with annual renewal required. The current ARB recommended vote does not tie this requirement to the certificate of occupancy. It links it to the building permit. There is nothing to bind any future owner to residency. ADUs could very quickly become multi-unit rental buildings. The current ADU proposal may also provide an additional incentive for developers to buy small moderately priced homes as they come on the market in order to demolish them and erect much larger homes with large additions or separate structures for profit-making ADUs. The proponents say that their research found that the owner occupancy requirement discouraged the creation of ADUs, but they haven't said which communities they looked at. I did some research and found that the following communities in eastern Massachusetts all require owner occupancy of one unit. Acton, Bedford, Boston, Brookline, Burlington, Cambridge, Canton, Carlisle, Concord, Dedham, Lexington, Lincoln, Maynard, Melrose, Milton, Newton, Peabody, Reading, Sharon, Stonem, Wakefield, Wayland, Weston, Westwood, and Wilmington, to name only a few. The Levering Report from Tufts University, in fact, found that strict requirements by towns did not have the dampening effect one might expect and noted that even towns with very liberal regulations saw a few ADUs created. The main barriers were economic, and especially for older homeowners, who found it more feasible to sell and move rather than to invest in creating an ADU. Both of these amendments offer very basic protections that are especially important in dense areas of town like East Arlington or for non-conforming lots where houses are close together or on private ways where neighbors can play a large role in one's life. And both can be relaxed as the rollout of ADUs takes place. If we see that this is happening with no issues, then we can remove these requirements. The main hurdle now is to make ADUs work for all, and if we err on the side of caution at first, that seems reasonable. I urge you to vote in support of both Evans amendments. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Do we have a second on her second? Yes, we do. Both of her amendments have been seconded. And the next speaker is Ms. Beth Benedict.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Beth Benedict, Precinct 21. First, I want to thank Barbara Thornton for crafting a well-thought-out and well-intentioned article. We know ADUs are popular. They allow us to bring in extra income. They allow us to age in place. They create housing for friends and families, among only a few benefits. But folks, clearly, there are too many amendments here trying to fix this particular article. We do have a fix. We have a solution, and that solution is Article 15 on the 2019 warrant, the article that was brought back by Al Tosti. That article, while not perfect either, was thoughtfully and carefully created by our own ARB, and it just needed some tweaks. So let's tweak it. Let's take the time to do this right. We have the time. Let's find a compromise. Let's take time to align this article with other similar towns and communities and get residents' input from all the districts in our town, especially East Arlington, where the neighborhood is so dense. Let's take the time to put in real safeguards for all types of ADUs. Let's take the time to put in a real complaint process, one that is user-friendly and clear and responsive, one that has a good and effective resolution process. That way, if ordinances aren't followed or units become unsafe after several rental cycles, we're all protected. Folks, let's compromise and find a middle ground. We can do this. We've got the time. Let's take that time that is needed to bring back an article that allows us to have ADUs in our great town, an article that protects both neighbors and neighborhoods. Thank you, Beth Benedict, Precinct 21.
Thank you, Ms. Benedict. Ms. Benedict's motion has been seconded. That brings all of the, by my count, 13 amendments in front of us. So what we're going to do now is commence debating on them. We're going to debate for a little while. Let's try and keep it to four minutes each. My current thought process is, when it comes to voting, obviously, we're going to do all the motions prior to the main motion of the ARB. I think that my thought process has gone back and forth, and after consultation with our assistant moderator, Adam Oster today, Adam had a good suggestion. My thought process was first to vote Ms. Benedict's, which will vote her first, for that motion first. Then, my plan was to vote Mr. Tosti's motion. And if that was successful, dispose of all the other motions without a vote, we'll somehow just figure that out. But then after Adam's suggestion, I believe that, and he believed that maybe some town meeting members who like some of the amendments and like the main ARB motion. And so in order to give everyone a fair vote and to make it a worthwhile process for debate and to drill down to what everyone really wants, we're going to go the long route. We're going to go through all the votes on all the different motions. And then when we finish voting all of those, we'll vote for Mr. Tosti's emotion, substitute motion, and then depending on the outcome of that, we'll take the final vote either on the ARB motion as amended by all the amendments or on Mr. Tosti's. So that's going to be how we're going to end up voting on this. And I put some thought process into which motions are going to be voted in which order, and I'll explain that at the end when we're about to vote on them. So that's going to be our plan of attack once we get through all the debate. So I'm going to try and call on people as they checked in, but I'm also going to kind of roll around to make sure we hear all sides of the argument. So the first is Michael Brown.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. This is Michael Jacobi Brown from Precinct 17, and I'm going to say a few things, and when I'm done, I'd like Phil Tedesco, the main drafter of Article 43, to be able to speak to some of the proposed amendments. But now I'm rising, well, actually, I'm sitting down, but in support of Article 33 allowing accessory dwelling units, often called in-law apartments. I think the in-law apartments can be helpful in many ways, although, as some have already pointed out, I can also see some problems. More about that later. But first, what's good? Well, for example, my dad, Bob Brown, after his wife of more than 60 years and my mother died, he moved into, in effect, our in-law apartment, the other side of our house. Like many, our own home of about 1,000 square feet has two bedrooms, one bathroom, and with our daughter still home, no room in our own home for grandpa. So he moved into what was our in-law apartment, and that was good for us, and I think also good for the town. My dad joined the Council on Aging and contributed his artistic gifts there. He designed and made the silver ceramic metal for the Council on Aging 5K Run. So if you have one, thank my dad and our in-law apartment. My dad was also a US Army World War II veteran who served in France, Belgium, and Germany. He joined the Arlington High School Intergenerational Book Club. I bet he had some good history lessons for the high school students. So in-law apartments will allow elders like my dad, who otherwise could never afford it, to move to Arlington. The in-law apartments will also help parents. They will, as we did, have a built-in babysitter. This will allow parents of young children to not have to pay a babysitter when they want a date night. This will help couples' relationship. Date night is good for couples with young children. Now that I think about it, it's probably good for couples with not-so-young children or those without children at all. But it will also help Arlington restaurants, hard hit by COVID. Many parents are more likely to go out to eat when they don't have to pay for a babysitter, thanks to grandma or grandpa next door. Now, some have pointed out the problems. I see them too. For example, a lot of elders can be hard of hearing. I know this because almost every week I get a glossy brochure in the mail telling me to buy a hearing aid, and other people, my wife, for example, often tell me I don't hear so well. I also know that people love the music they heard in their adolescence. So with elders being hard of hearing, we might have elders playing old Frank Sinatra or Duke Ellington records real loud late at night, and this could be a problem. But when I think of the benefits, free babysitters, more date nights for parents of young children, more people eating out in Arlington restaurants, children getting to know their grandparents, elders who otherwise could never afford to live in Arlington, contributing their wisdom and skills to the town and our young people. Hey, sounds like a good, good deal to me. And if the music gets too loud, just ask the kids to yell, probably like your parents did to you. Hey, Grandma, Grandpa.
Michael.
That's our music.
Michael.
Yeah.
But let's stick to the article and the benefits. Also, you and Mr. Tedesco are limited to seven minutes total.
Yeah, I'm done, and I would ask that Mr. Tedesco have some time to respond to the amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm done.
Yep, good. Mr. Tedesco here.
Yes, Philip Tedesco, 74 Park Street, Precinct 5. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I have to I have to say, the opposition we've heard is really unfortunate because Article 43 at its core is very modest. Under Article 43, all setback height, dimensional, and special permit requirements of our zoning will continue to apply to accessory dwelling units. What it does is allow ADUs as a use, subject to those limitations and requirements. While there's too much to comprehensively address in my time, I would like to highlight some key points. The first is just what kind of numbers we're talking about. If, even if Article 43 results in more ADUs here than anywhere else in Massachusetts, it will add about 15 ADUs a year, which is less than 1/10 of 1% of new housing used here throughout our neighborhoods. While Mr. Tosti has suggested that thousands of ADUs would be added under Article 43, it's unclear what, if anything, that's based on, since the average number of ADUs in Massachusetts towns that allow them is about 2.5 a year. The real risk here is something overly restrictive like the Tosti motion that results in no or very few ADUs. For context, 10 of the 37 Boston-area municipalities with ADU bylaws average less than one each year. The Tosti amendment off the bat prohibits ADUs outside of R0 and R1, and then also prohibits them on non-conforming lot, which extends the ban to over 40% of houses in R1 and almost a fifth of houses in R0. Article 43 follows our existing zoning for adding space. So if you could add space for a bedroom or home office, you could use that space for an ADU. Under the Tosti motion, you can't add floor area for an ADU, and in fact, any floor area is ever added to a house. It's forever eligible for an ADU. In other words, under the Tosti motion, if you add a bedroom for a child, you can't later turn that space into an ADU. And at the same time, the Tosti motion disregards the guidance of state legislation and unreasonably limits the size of ADUs to 1/3 the size of the principal dwelling, measured after you carve out the ADU space. So the Tosti motion further is limited only to those with very large houses to begin with. We've heard a lot about detached ADUs. Under Article 43, converting an existing ADU, a garage to an ADU close to the lot line, requires a special permit. It's a public discretionary process and requires the ZBA to find that the ADU will not impair the integrity or character of the district. Under Article 43, only homeowners, not developers, can create ADUs, and we've deliberately made it so that the Housing Corporation of Arlington can create additional affordable ADUs, which the Tosti motion and many amendments will take away. Taking a step back, Article 43 is about homeowners building space for their parents or in-laws for kids to move home to Arlington. And the fundamental question before town meeting is whether we want to have ADUs only on paper, but de facto keep them effectively outlawed in all but the narrowest of circumstances? Or do we want to allow Arlington homeowners to be able to choose to create ADUs as long as they comply with zoning? I hope you'll agree that allowing ADUs, not just on paper, but actual ADUs are good and important for ourselves and our neighbors and support Article 43 as drafted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tedesco. Steve Revellak.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Steve Revellak of Precinct 1, and I will try to keep it to my voluntary four minutes. So one of the uses of an accessory dwelling unit is a means of providing, you know, a rental unit. So I'd like to say a few words about rentals and, you know, just rental arrangements in general. Now, if I had a proper, if I had some, if I had the money, I could go out and purchase a few single and two-family homes around town and rent them out. And as far as I know, I wouldn't need to live in one of these buildings in order to rent it. There's not an owner occupancy requirement for landlords. Now, and also, as far as I know, there wouldn't be any restrictions on who my renters could be or how long they'd be able to stay. For example, if I had a renter that wanted to do a tenancy at will, a month-to-month self-renewing lease, I'd be able to accommodate that request. So to reiterate, under, you know, normal circumstances of, you know, renting a place to live, you know, I could go out, buy a couple of homes, rent them out to whomever I wanted to. I wouldn't have to live in any of the buildings, the length of the time of the lease, and the, you know, the amount of the rent would be up to me and my tenants. That's just ordinary arrangements, and Article 3 is simply trying to, you know, do that with ADUs. So I noticed that a number of the amendments before us tonight are trying to put restrictions on the owner-tenant relationship, and I think a lot of these would be highly unusual in any other context, you know, involving renters. I'm also a little concerned that some of these amendments might be casting renters in a bad light and, you know, as if they would, you know, create some sort of a menace that the town needs to be protected from, and I, I really disagree with that. Other amendments are trying to add restrictions on where and how ADUs can be built, particularly Mr. Tosti's motion that would limit them to conforming lots only. Now, as we discussed, under Article 38, Arlington has a lot of non-conforming lots. And by passing it, we addressed an inequity that prevents those homeowners from building energy-efficient homes. You know, I hope we do not pass something this year that, you know, creates a similar inequity for homeowners that want to spend or want to build the ADUs. And finally, I'd like to say a few words about East Arlington, since it's been mentioned several times in conjunction with this article. I live in East Arlington on a street full of, you know, what are really non-conforming duplexes. Now, my neighbor, Chris, two doors down, she had a basement apartment in her half-duplex, and it was basically as close to an ADU as you could get without actually having one. Some of her tenants stayed for short periods of time and some stayed for longer. I was on a first-name basis with several of them. They were my neighbors, and they were good people. And the other half of that duplex was another couple. You know, they didn't have an ADU-like apartment, but they routinely rented their spare bedroom to Borders. So in short, the house next door to me was a duplex, and for years, there were two families living there and extra renters living on each side. You know, with that lived experience, I have no concerns about a few more renters in East Arlington or, you know, the idea of putting ADUs in duplexes. In fact, I kind of liked that environment. Having a few extra folks around led to some nice backyard conversations, the occasional potluck dinner, and a stronger sense of community. So to my mind, Article 43 is basically, would really take my lived experience in East Arlington and simply make it legal to do. So I'm completely fine with that. I hope you will vote for Article 43 unamended. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Revellak. Greg Christiana, and while we wait for Mr. Christiana to get up, now we're open for debate on all of the amendments and substitute motions as well as the main article. So if you have any questions or thoughts on anything, now is the time to do it. So Mr. Christiana.
Yes, Greg Christiana, Precinct 15. I rise in support of Article 43 and against all of the amendments. In discussions about zoning changes like this, we hear a lot about changes to the character of our neighborhoods. I love the character of our neighborhoods. It's a big part of why I love the character of our neighborhoods. It's a big part of why my family moved here several years ago. Uh, but I think a lot of us have been waking up to some harsh realities in, in the past few years. Uh, realities of inequity, uh, affordability, and policies that keep communities exclusive by excluding those without the privilege of high incomes, uh, which is exacerbated by restrictive zoning that perpetuates an inequitable status quo. Uh, our responsibility here is to weigh all these considerations. So in recent weeks, I've listened to what a lot of people have said about Article forty-three. Uh, and I've come to realize that one factor seems to motivate opposition more than any other, and that's fear. Fear of changing the character of our neighborhoods, uh, fear of unintended consequences, fear of ADUs spreading unchecked throughout our neighborhoods, uh, fear of like the increased, uh, kind of rental population, and Steve covered that, so I'm not going to speak more about that, but I think a hundred percent what he said. And on Monday, we even heard about the fear of neighbors erecting guard towers over their garages. But none of those fears accurately reflects the realities of what Article forty-three actually do in the real world. So let's be clear about the vetting process that this article has gone through since an earlier proposal from ADUs that came before town meeting two years ago that's been talked about. Article forty-three has been researched and developed through a public process where there was ample opportunity over a period of months, multiple months, for public input. And ultimately, the ARB, the Select Board, and the Diversity Task Group have all supported it. And that's no small feat. That's a pretty rich diversity of perspectives represented there. And I'm, I'm, I'm sure this article is still imperfect, and I'm comfortable with that. This article won't solve the problem of affordable housing. If we're lucky, it'll make a small dent. But after we pass this article, I hope, uh, we need to try another approach and then another and another until we crack this problem. We can't just study problems on paper year after year. We have to try things out in the real world. Delaying or kneecapping the deployment of real solutions for affordable housing in the real world has costs. That people say that there's, we have time. Time has a cost, maybe not to those of us who are privileged, right? But certainly for lots of other folks who are not. So delaying or so that these costs, like, they perpetuate the, the kinds of restrictions that have historically worked against diversity, equity, inclusion, and affordability. Right? I'm sure these same sorts of arguments, same shapes of arguments were probably made fifty, sixty years ago, right? And we look back on that not so kindly now. And so the moral cost of the status quo motivate me on this article more than a desire to preserve the status quo through fear about how our neighborhoods might not look exactly the same in the future. And Article forty-three does this by extending the rights of homeowners for more flexible living arrangements and income opportunities. This article in its unamended form is a symbi, is symbiotic between homeowners and affordability. And that strikes me as a very clear win-win. So I ask that you support Article forty-three to take this modest early step in the right direction and that you reject all these amendments which, which would constrain the main article in ways that will dilute its already limited ability to diversify our housing stock in Arlington. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Christiana. Josh Lobel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Josh Lobel, Precinct Eight. Um, I have a question that I don't know if someone can answer, but we've kind of tossed around different projections of how many ADUs this article would create, Article forty-three versus the, uh, Mr. Tosti's amendment. Does, can anyone reflect on that who's, uh, who's got some expertise?
Ms. Sembury?
I'd like to defer to Jennifer Raitt, please.
Okay, Ms. Raitt?
Jennifer Raitt, Director of Planning and Community Development. I believe we were going to have Barbara, uh, provide answers to these questions, but I am, I'm glad to step in if needed, uh, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, well, as long as you just answered the question. Ms. Thornton?
I might say, while Ms. Thornton's unmuting, that, um, my recollection was that when Article nine, uh, Article fifteen, I guess in twenty nineteen, came up, that the projection was it might create, you know, three to five ADUs in a year or something of that sort.
Yeah, Barbara Thornton here.
Yes, how many do you think it's going to create, Ms. Thornton?
The difference between the two, uh, Tosti versus?
ARB?
I'm not sure of the question, but I think the significant difference, I think the sense of the question was, what's the difference in the capability of the Article forty-three to produce ADUs versus the Tosti motion?
No, I think.
No, it's really, it's really a question of whether there's going to be a stampede of creating, you know, hundreds or thousands of ADUs.
I, I see. I'm sorry, Josh. Thank you. No, there's not going to be a stampede. I would be very, I would be delirious if there were five ADUs a year. And of those ADUs, they will be the type one within the, within a house ADUs. Uh, there may be, uh, one or two extensions and there may be one detached version of an ADU every maybe three or four years.
Okay, thank you very much.
On the statistics nationally and regionally.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, I guess I, I'll try and be brief, but I, we've talked a lot about affordable housing. We know that affordable housing is very, very difficult to create. It requires either public subsidies or it requires increased density. It creates changes that people seem to be reluctant to accept. And I see this is just such a natural and, and obvious way to create affordable housing. A, it's going to increase the total inventory, which, you know, may have some very small impact on supply and demand. But I think importantly, it, it's basically a smaller space. It takes less, uh, investment to create it. And so I think it's likely to, to be rented out for a more affordable, affordable price. It just makes sense. Um, it has all the other benefits that, uh, Mr. Brown and Mr. Revellak and everybody have, have talked about of, of building better community and helping people stay in their homes and intergenerational stuff. Um, so it just, again, I think that it's, it's kind of a no-brainer to me. I've been in town meeting for a long time. As, as others have said, it's very easy to say, oh, yes, let's study it a little bit more. Let's proceed slowly. But even if we kind of adopt Article forty-three, I think it's unlikely that there's going to be a huge change and it's going to be a small necessary change. And this doesn't end the matter. We can always tweak it in the future, but in this particular case, I think it's better to tweak it slightly wide open for those five or 10 units as opposed to putting it on a trickle of one or two or zero units. So I fully support the main motion and I oppose all the amendments because all those also have unintended consequences like not letting the Housing Corporation of Arlington create units on their properties as well. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Lobel. Um, Sanjay Newton?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Sanjay Newton, Precinct Ten. Um, I'm, I'm excited about ADUs. Um, in particular, I'm excited about three things that they make possible. First, the HCA would be able to cost-effectively add some additional units of permanently affordable housing to their existing properties in the R two districts. Um, other nonprofit developers would have this opportunity in the future as well. Second, um, you know, as, as Mr. Lobel just talked about, we, you know, we would get additional small rental units spread, spread throughout town, and I think that's really important. We wouldn't be congregating all of those small units in one area of town. Third, I'm really excited about opportunities for multi-generational living. My mother grew up in a house that had been split into what we would now call a main unit and an ADU. Um, when she and her siblings were young, her grandparents were able to help care for them. As they aged, they were able to help care for her grandparents. But the important thing was that the privacy and independence of living next to, instead of with, made that situation tenable. Um, I, I don't think that my, uh, well, anyway, they wouldn't have gotten along if they'd all lived in the same house. Uh, I'm excited to allow this kind of use in Arlington for families that might want it. Now, about the amendments, there are so many amendments. When it comes down to it, um, I interpret all these amendments as either limiting the number of properties that would be eligible for an ADU or limiting who can live in a property once it has an ADU. Um, I, I just, I don't share the fear that an ADU with people in it is scarier with a, than a garage with cars or, or a home office addition. Um, and so I just, I don't find the amendments compelling in general. Uh, I hope you will join me in voting for Article forty-three and against the various amendments and substitutes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. David Fretzer? Fretzer?
Uh, thank you, Moderator. Um, it's David Fretzer, Precinct Seventeen. I'd just like to speak in favor of the main motion. I think this creates a strong option for homeowners to create smaller, less expensive units, uh, which would be a strong positive step towards addressing Arlington's housing challenges without changing the size or any of the dimensional aspects of what's allowed. It gives homeowners a way to help our neighbors stay in Arlington and allows them to accommodate their relatives and children, um, which just builds stronger neighborhoods and stronger communities. Uh, today, we have zoning that makes it legal to make homes larger and more expensive, uh, which is already changing the character of our neighborhoods and, you know, contributing to our housing cost challenges. This simply provides a, a new alternative that has a lot of advantages and gives homeowners, uh, that ability. Um, and I think that, um, you know, in terms of garages, I think that we really need to be willing to put people over cars and not prioritize space for cars over space for people. I also want to say that the main motion has been developed, uh, in public over the course of years and has lots of opportunities for input and has been dramatically improved um, over past proposals by incorporating that feedback. I, um, I, I think now is the time to pass it. Um, and I just want to say that I want, I really support the main motion and compared to some of the alternatives. Um, I just, I think the, some of the alternatives by preventing nonprofits from creating uh, permanently affordable units, by making it harder for homeowners to sell their house if they had as an ADU or by requiring longer, uh, uh, rental terms for renters in an ADU than any other unit. I, I feel like those are just barriers that prevent ADUs from moving up to their potential. So I encourage everyone to vote for the main motion. Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Fretzer. Alexander Bagnell?
Alex Bagnell, uh, Precinct Seven. Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, I move to terminate debate on the article and all matters before it.
Okay, we have motion to terminate debate in the article and all matters before it. It's been seconded. Okay, so motion to terminate debate in the article and all thirteen amendments, or thirteen motions, I should say. So as we open voting, please migrate back to the voting portal. If you wish to terminate debate, please vote one for yes. If you want to continue the debate, vote two for no. If you can't do either, please use the chat function in Zoom or text your vote to Mr. Karowski at six one seven five seven five nine two six six. If all else fails, call Ms. Brazil, seven eight one three one six three oh seven one. Okay, we got a thumbs up. We can close voting. Uh, the motion fails sixty-one percent. We have a hundred forty-two in the affirmative and ninety negative. We need a two-thirds vote. That would have been sixty-six percent. So it fails. We're going to continue with the debate. Michael Rudeman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Rudeman, Precinct Nine. I speak in favor of Ms. Benedict's amendment to refer the matter to committee. I believe the strongest, uh, you know, support that we can see for her benefit is that it is, in a sense, what in-town meeting time is described as the motion to commit or refer. And it's, it's interesting to actually look at what, 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 what town meeting time says about a motion to commit or refer. If the proposition will want more amendment and digestion, then the formalities, formalities of the House will conveniently admit they refer it to a committee. And I think that's what we're experiencing tonight. There is simply too much here to digest in this medium, in this medium of non-face-to-face, uh, conversation where, where we are so strictly limited to one person at a time. There are things that still need to be hashed out here in person, the most effective way to do it. I'm not satisfied that this is the best that we can come up with. And again, I would like to see Ms. Benedict's motion pass so that we can have some more discussion on this. And please, don't tell me that I'm afraid of ADUs. Here's what I really want. In real estate, we talk about a bundle of rights or privileges that come along with owning a piece of land. One of those is you can build on it according to the rules and zoning of, of the community. We are about to confer a major change, a major addition in that bundle of rights. The ability to develop a property which presently is illegal to further develop. This makes the property more valuable and we can have all the touching stories that you like about your father, your grandmother, uh, uh, an elderly friend, a neighbor. But if that's what you really want, that's what we have to write. That's what we have to put into the article. In conferring this benefit to develop properties further than what the law currently allows them, who are we giving the benefit to? Well, we're giving the benefit to people, obviously, with property. People with property and people with capital. The capital to invest to create the ADU within, within the property. Who are the people that we so frequently say we need more of in Arlington because diversity is a good? Diversity is a goal. Diversity means not just the color of skin, but economic and social diversity. How does conferring a benefit to people with capital and property serve the social good of creating more diversity in town? People, it doesn't unless we require it to. And that is what I would argue for. Once we can get around the table, face-to-face, and come up with a version of this article, which will not have such a long list of amendments that frankly, and disappointingly, I hear some of my fellow town meeting colleagues throwing up their hands and saying, yo, can't deal with, just, just, just vote. No against, no against all the amendments. Just pass the article. Come on, let's go. Let's get done. Let's go home. Well, we're already home, but you know what I mean. So I would urge you to be patient. Take this once, once in a, I don't know what, time, opportunity to require. in a, I don't know what, time, opportunity to require a huge new benefit to actually work for the social good. The way to do that is to send this question to committee. Ms. Benedict's amendment offers us the opportunity to do that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Ruderman. Adam McNeil?
Adam McNeil, Precinct 6, pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Seuss? Folks, just to remind you, you can lower your hand if you no longer wish to speak. By using the raise hand to speak button, it turns into a lower hand. Ms. Seuss, you have the floor.
Hi, Jennifer Seuss, Precinct 3. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So I have talked to lots of people across town about housing issues in general. And I have to say that there is a lot of excitement about the ADUs. And people are not necessarily excited because they're going to add an ADU. After all, it's very expensive to do so, so it's not going to happen that quickly. People are excited about the possibility that they could if their family needs require it. And I am worried about the, both the substitute motion of Altosti and also the amendments that seek to pretty dramatically limit who can add an ADU and potentially make it economically infeasible. You know, we know that banks might not loan to people to, to allow them to build something if there's an uncertainty about whether they can, whether it might become illegal if they were to, say, be pulled out of their house for a couple of years for a job situation or so forth. And so I really urge you to pass a very clean, a very simple proposal that has been well-vetted, that has unanimous support of the Select Board, of the Redevelopment Board. And Redevelopment Board looked again very, very carefully at all the amendments and substitute motions and unanimously reaffirmed their support for the original motion. It's not radical here. It's, it's, it is giving families an opportunity to, to use their house in ways that might suit their needs. And eventually, when those needs go away, adding some natural affordability across town. And so I urge you to support the original motion and reject the amendments. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Seuss. Mr. Gordon Jamison?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I want to thank Mr. Tesco, Christiana, Revellak, and all, and Ms. Seuss as well, for their eloquent comments about the article. I support voting for the main and against all other motions and substitutes. Substitutes in particular seek to either delay us moving forward or drastically limit who can do this. So we'll get nothing out of either of those proposals. And the other motions do similar things, different bits and pieces. The reason I would have moved to terminate, except it didn't work so well very recently. But I want to remind the body that, excuse me, we have three primary reporting bodies that comment before us with main motions that they've taken the time to review and develop: the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Redevelopment Board. And the people who are on the Redevelopment Board think about this and spend hours upon hours that many of us don't have, to craft an article that adheres to current state law, profits from past and current discussions. And I'm all in favor of Article 43 to pass without amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Phil Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Phil Goff, Precinct 7. I'm not a big fan of the substitute motion, nor the amendments, with one exception. I do have a question about the one amendment that someone interested in perhaps. The one, and I don't remember the, the number of the woman who proposed it, the one that limited the number of ADUs to one per parcel. I have a question about that one. So perhaps Mr. Heim or Mr. Burns, and I know that's your job. So I'll let you.
I think it's Ms. Lori Leahy had one per lot.
I believe that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Leahy? Go ahead, Phil. We'll bring Leahy up while you speak.
And she can answer it. Perhaps someone else. I'm just wondering, you know, will there be legal issues related to properties like mine and many others, especially in East Arlington, where you have condos and two-family houses and their condo associations that sort of have parts of the property? If one condo owner wanted to put an ADU in the basement, another one wanted to put, say, a rehab, a redo of the garage, would inspectional services, would they be reviewing the ADU proposals by individual property owners? Or would it need to come formally from condo associations? I'm just wondering, is it even really possible to negotiate bylaw like that if, in fact, we did pass that amendment? I'm just wondering if the legal issues perhaps would make it impossible. Sorry if that's a complex question.
Yeah, I'm not even sure. Ms. Leahy could address that.
I may, but I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah, let's ask Ms. Leahy if she can. Otherwise, we'll ask Mr. Heim if he would have an opinion on that. Ms. Leahy?
Hi, Lori Leahy, Precinct 21. I am not a lawyer or a person that could address the legal aspects of that. But I do believe that these kind of issues are worked out between condo associations all the time. This is a particular, you know, ADU, it's discussing ADUs, but they discuss all kinds of things, like, I can't even think of one right now. But, you know, should we expand the driveway? Should we, I don't know, put in air conditioning? I can't tell. But I think that this would be something that they would have to discuss and maybe have to go to mediation if both of them wanted to do it. My reasoning behind it is to prevent a two-family from becoming a four-family. And that's why I put that amendment in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like, Mr., see if Mr. Heim can give you a further answer on a legal issue, Mr. Goff?
Perhaps, yeah. And then I do have maybe one minute of comment after that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Heim?
Good evening.
Do you have any opinion on that?
Good evening, members of town meeting. Doug Heim, Town Council. The, the one thing, I guess, I would want to make clear is that the right to do something under a zoning bylaw doesn't obviate or necessarily trump your condo docs. So if your condo treats a garage as common space, you don't have the right individually to develop your garage. Now, as Ms. Leahy is suggesting, it may be possible that condo sort of bylaws, if you will, as opposed to town or zoning bylaws, might be amended to arrange for how they would handle, especially common areas. The, I think, most acute issue is whether or not folks' condo docs would address a condo owner's desire to place an ADU entirely within their own unit. So I hope, I hope that that's helpful. But I would just want to make clear that I, this, this wouldn't necessarily address every issue condo owners own property in a very specific arrangement. They might have to make their own individual provisions and decisions about things like that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Those were helpful responses. I appreciate it. So just to finish up then, I think, like some others in town, for sure, I have some concerns about what may result from this bylaw. However, you know, I'm personally willing to give this a try. I think there's some real potential here. This has been discussed for a couple of years. If, if this doesn't pass, it's going to be, continue to be discussed for many other years, as we've heard from Robert Thornton and, and I guess some others. We're not talking about a radical change, five, 10 units here. And I think that, you know, to me, what's really compromising, you know, the quality of life in the neighborhoods in this town are the McMansions, the side-by-side kind of pit houses, you know, looming over garages, some of the overbuilt, got rehab condo projects I see in East Arlington. And with ADUs, I mean, I would love to see some, you know, modest-sized homes, some small homes, no more than 800 square feet, built for in-laws, or even, God forbid, new residents, new residents that aren't necessarily pulling in over $100,000 a year, like, like many of us in Arlington here. So I'm still going to put a little bit of thought into that one amendment, but I would advocate a no vote on the other amendments and the substitute motion. And let's move forward with Article 43. Thank you very much.
Mr. Goff, Leva Hayam?
Leva Hayam, Precinct 11. I move the article in all matters before it.
Okay, another motion to turn, to terminate debate by Ms. Leva Hayam. And it's seconded. It's been seconded, so we're going to go for a vote on terminate debate. Okay, we're opening voting, so migrate back to the voting portal. If you wish to terminate debate, please vote 1 for yes. If you don't want to terminate debate, vote 2 for no. Chat your vote in, yes or no, to terminate, or text 617-575-9266, or call Ms. Brazil 781-301-781-316-3071. Right now, we're in server overload. So cast your vote, text, or chat your vote in. Okay. All our manual votes have been entered. Soon as we get down to zero, we'll close voting. And motion to terminate debate is successful. 160 to 73. 147. It is a 2/3 vote, and I so declare it. Debate is terminated. Once we go through all the screens, we are going to then commence voting on all of the amendments. In re-determined order. Big chart. First, we're going to vote on Ms. Benedict's motion. So Ms. Benedict has put before us a motion, a substitute motion to refer to a committee. Adam McNeil has a point of order before we commence voting. Mr. McNeil, what's your point of order?
Adam McNeil, Precinct 6. Thank you. Could you clarify, it looked to me on the screen that the main motion required 2/3 vote. I thought it was a majority vote for that. If you could clarify that, thank you.
Yeah, all the, everything is a majority vote, including Mr. Tosti's and the main motion, because they are as of right, and they, they can be done. So that makes them a majority vote as a 2/3. So if we have it as a 2/3, we'll correct it when we get there.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Thank, thank you, sir. Ms. Anne Leroy?
I had the same question, just to clarify whether each and every vote is majority or 2/3. But you just answered that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, are we ready to enable voting?
Yes, on Ms. Benedict's. We're going to enable voting.
Thank you.
So if you're substitute motion, which would refer the whole question and all the motions and the amendments back to a committee for further study, you'll vote yes. If you don't want to do that, you want to proceed ahead, you'll vote no. So use the portal, vote yes to refer back to a committee, no to continue the voting trail, or use chat, or yes or no on that, or text to 617-575-9266. Okay, all manual votes have been entered. So soon as we get down to zero, we'll close voting. Ms. Benedict's motion fails. We have 53 in the affirmative and 187 in the negative. So the Benedict motion fails. So I so declare that, and Ms. Benedict's motion. The next one we're going to vote on is Ms. Preston's motion. Let me find that. Preston's motion. What I've done is I've found, looked through the entire group of motions and grouped them into groups that do similar things. And, you know, or if they stand alone, and we're going to vote on ones that are kind of standalone, or if they're together, I'll mention that. So Ms. Preston's motion, she wants to insert a bullet point at an accessory dwelling unit in a garage or other That an accessory dwelling unit in a garage or other building shall be at least fifteen feet from an existing residential dwelling on the abutting property. We just voted on Beth's. So let's show Joey. Here we go. So this is this Preston's motions, we're going to vote on.
Adam, I don't know if John is back or who's back, but I'm concerned that, um. That we, uh, may be losing a lot of town meeting members because of the storm.
Uh, I agree, Mr. Foscat. I do still see two hundred and six people in the room, but I don't, I can't recognize if John is back yet.
Well, you also don't know that they're live, right? I mean, this is a question.
Yep, you're right. Uh, we don't know if they're still in a, um, if they got kicked off, but their name is still in or. Uh, if they're actually still with us.
This is Doug Heim, Town Council. Um, is Mr. Oster still with us?
I am indeed.
Oster, as the Assistant Moderator, uh, you are serving as the moderator in Mr. Leone's absence while he tries to rejoin the meeting. May I address the meeting, sir?
Yes, um, I can do that, but I guess, I think the first order of business is to see who is really connected and who isn't. It's not clear to me if, if we can't count on the number, the participants list to show people who are actually here.
Emily?
I don't know if we have a quorum.
I'm gonna let you go and call John because they're, oh.
Mr. Oster, if I can make suggestion, um. I was one of the people who lost connection to the meeting and I was finally able to rejoin. If any members, um. I, I do suggest that you try to take an informal poll to see how many members are actually on the meeting at this point in time. If there are enough members on the meeting, uh, we can take a vote to, uh, recess while we try to get more folks back. Uh, given that it's almost nine thirty, but I've spoken with Mr. Leone, who's trying to get back on. I was just able to get back on myself.
Uh, uh, well, Mr. Heim, I think that's a very good suggestion, but, uh, uh, I'll ask your opinion, why don't we just recess, um, for fifteen minutes? Since we would be doing that shortly anyway.
Sure, I think that makes sense.
How do you communicate that to the meeting if they're, if they're not connected?
Mr. Foscat, if I may, and I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that, that, that I'm not a town meeting member, so I don't ordinarily have the right to address the meeting, but these are unusual circumstances. Um, I'll be in contact with Mr. Chapdeline and Mr. Leone to try to see if we can send a message out to town meeting numbers by email. Um, on the town meeting member list. Um, hold on one moment, sir.
John?
Yeah, I'm back. Oh, you, I, you have to start my video.
Mr. Moderator, you should be okay to start your video and audio.
I'm back, I think. Art, can you hear me? Oh, I took my jacket off.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Heim?
I just spoke with Mr. Chapdeline, the town manager, and he did report, uh, somewhat germane to Mr. Foscat's concern. That he, he, he is in the meeting, or he thinks he is, but he can't see or hear me talking to you folks. So I've recommended to see if he leaves the meeting. And rejoins it if it will, um, basically put him back on the same page.
I tried that a few times and it did work. Um, it also told me the meeting had terminated.
Mr. Moderator, this is.
Yes, Mr. Foscat.
Precinct day. It seems to me that there are two hundred and fifty people out there that we can't easily determine if they have fair and reasonable access to the meeting. And so, um, th- this is, uh, in, in violation of the, I don't know if it's in violation of the town meetings, uh, open meeting, you know, emergency open meeting law requirement. But it's certainly in violation of the ones that I've been reading to the finance committee meeting every time we meet. And if we can't assure that all those people are there, I don't think we should be having the meeting. I think we should adjourn.
I, I know, uh, like Ms. Mahoney, I spoke to her, she's can't get back in either. And right now I appear to have two hundred and twelve attendees. Whereas earlier in the night, we had two hundred and twenty-five, so I noticed at least thirteen people who haven't come back in. I, I'm sort of on the same wavelength as you, Mr.
This. Mr. Moderator, uh, just to, oh.
I just. My, my Zoom just cut out and left again. Oh, now getting back up to two hundred and seventeen, eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, can you take an attendance vote at this point in time?
Yes, we can. Um. I don't know if we could, we could take a, um, if we invent a new. Article, Adam. Call Article forty-three attendance.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I think that would work.
Yeah.
Uh, let me queue it up for you.
Okay.
I would, before I do that, uh, I would have to close voting on the previous. Uh, amendment, which is Ms. Preston's amendment.
Now, we'll just re, um, we'll close voting on that and we'll in. Create a new Ms. Preston amendment. We'll call it Ms. Preston two, because she only has one amendment, therefore we'll have to take a revote on that, because that's the vote that we lost connectivity on.
Okay, I think we can actually vote right over the existing vote, uh, and we'll just take the second collection. But yes, I'll, I'll close voting and then create a new attendance.
And Mr. Heim, while we do this, can you put your, um. Town Council thinking cap on and, and give us an opinion. As to the viability of continuing the meeting this evening. When we. Have an unstable connection and we don't have the full complement we had before. So town meeting members, if you're, once he creates a new vote, if you're able to. Um, get to the portal, um, just vote attendance on the new vote. And so just do an attendance vote. When we get that chance. And I did see two points of order, maybe while, um, we can bring Mr. Warden up on his point of order while we try and vote this attendance vote.
Mr. Moderator, I couldn't find, uh, Ms. Warden in Zoom, so I, uh, allowed Mrs. Warden to unmute herself.
Okay, so Patricia, if you could have John use your computer. And bring his point of order forward.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes. John and I, John has completed his, um, Zoom connection and mine is very unstable.
Okay, we'll see what happens.
I've only gotten into once in the last, uh, ten minutes. So, um, John, John is asking that for you to use my, here, you take my headphones and you can talk to him. You have to sit here. Okay. Here you are.
How'd you get in?
Here you are.
All right. Hi, John.
Hi, John.
Um, uh, well, um, I was just, we, we've, well, we've lost sound, I guess.
At this point, John, um, we are debating. If we should continue the meeting with an unstable connection or, um, and Mr. Heim's going to put his thinking cap on and think about that. Whereas, and we're not sure if we have all the town meeting members who were here before back in or not.
Well, I, 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 I heard you say, the last thing I heard is you said we had two hundred and twelve people here. Which sounds like, well, it shouldn't be a quorum, but if people are being blocked out, that's not.
Yeah, I think we're up to two twenty-eight at this point. Which is about where we were before.
But, uh, is it sound? But no, I, I don't know. If, we, we don't have any sound here. But I, I, I don't know. I don't, I, I maybe, Patricia, you have sound? I guess you do.
You do, because that's my headphones.
That's okay. I'm sorry. I'm on, I'm on her headphones. I, I, I've been permanently muted.
You can't even get back into the Zoom.
I can't. Okay, and I can't get back into the Zoom.
You can't, okay.
I'm sure the other people have the same problem. I don't want to keep you from dealing with them, but I, I. Forget to vote, I would, I would vote to adjourn until we can get the thing straightened out. There was, there was a hell of a thunderclap. I'm sure you heard it.
Yeah, I think it was right out my front door.
Even my dog woke up, uh, but, but and, and then I heard the fire trucks, so I think somebody probably got hit by lightning. Okay, I'll go, push you back your headphones.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, we can close, close voting right now, Adam. Um, Leva Hyam has a point of order.
I can try to get back into it.
Try to get back into Zoom or what?
This time.
Mr. Moderator, you are, I'm, I'm sorry, you're leading for Ms. Hyam?
Yeah, but she hasn't popped in yet, Mr. Um. Ms. Hyam, Ms. Hyam.
I got booted too, so it didn't write as I was.
Oh.
There we go.
Thank you. I was in, it, I just wasn't acknowledged. Um, Leva Hyam, Precinct eleven. This is more point of information than a point of order. Um, Mr. Moderator, last fall, when Precinct eleven was without power, um, the meeting was determined to continue. With just one precinct affected, and I certainly would encourage us holding the same standard for tonight's meeting.
So what did we do last fall?
Last fall, Precinct eleven was without power.
Yeah.
And we had notified, um, you and other town officials, and the meeting was continued, um, regardless.
We adjourned, we adjourned for the evening.
No, no.
We continued the meeting. Ah, okay. Well, I think we may be back up to full strength, but I'm going to ask Attorney Heim to make an opinion, give us an opinion of what to do, but I appreciate that point of, um. Reference.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, uh, this is Doug Heim, Town Council.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that the meeting has two options. Uh, the first, and they're sort of iterative. So the first option is to, um. Take a recess, which we're due for now anyway. Uh, recommend that anybody who's having connection stability issues, log off and rejoin the meeting. Um, to try to correct any issues. There do appear to be a handful of folks who are on the meeting who have not at least been able to, uh, to vote that they're in attendance, although some two hundred and twenty-three people have been able to access the meeting. So the first thing we could do is have a recess, recommend that anybody who's having issues, um, with their connection stability, uh, log out of the meeting and then log back in. Um, I don't know how easy it would be to send a message by the town meeting member list. And, uh, to basically summarize same, saying if you're having connection issues, please log out of Zoom and log back in. It does appear that we've had a few folks report that they can hear only one side of a conversation that's happening, so that's somewhat concerning. If after that ten-minute recess, um, these issues don't have, don't seem to have been resolved, uh, I think that you have the ability to join the meeting. Uh, basically under an emergency circumstance until, um, our next scheduled meeting. The open meeting law is a little bit of a red herring in the sense that the open meeting law doesn't apply to town meeting. I think what's critical is that we have confidence that people can engage in the meeting. We don't have confidence, and I think it's more discretion to adjourn the meeting, um, to, uh, the next date. But I, I would recommend that we try to have a recess, suggest people reset their Zoom connections and come back in ten minutes. Um, if we can send out a message to the town meeting member email list recommending same in case there are folks who can't log in or can't hear what's being said right now. Uh, hopefully that seems to draw, seems to resolve most people's issues from what I've been.
Yeah.
Hearing, uh, from different sources.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Let's, um, Ms. Brazil, can you send an email to the town meeting list who have that ability from home?
Yes, I can.
Can you just tell everyone to log back in? Let's take our ten-minute break, maybe the connection will stabilize. So we'll check back in in ten minutes and, um, we'll continue the meeting. I think we're pretty much back to where we were, um, as far as the number of town meeting members that we had before. And then we'll just continue at that point and hopefully everyone's back in, because right now we had two hundred and twenty-four in our first attendance vote and we had two hundred and twenty-three in this attendance vote. So I think we're pretty much all the way back. Maybe there's one or two people out there who haven't been able to log back in, but let's send an email out and hope to get them back in, and then we'll continue after our break. Okay, everyone want to check your audio settings? And as soon as we get back in, we're ready to go again, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer a suggestion.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, if we wanted to check in with folks who couldn't or think they have an audio problem, we could have them raise their hand in Zoom and can, uh, address them.
Okay. Is the racing feature open? Yeah, okay. So if anyone having an audio issue. Please use the bracing feature. You should be able to hear me talking right now if you can't. Okay, we have three people that have no audit audio or is, eh, fish. Yeah, I guess I should keep talking. You'll have to forgive me. I took my jacket off because it was getting a little hot in here. We don't have any central AC in this old house. So I'm not putting it back on. It's kind of a silly leftover from the ancient days anyway, especially the tide. So did Miss Preston and Mr. Warden, did you check your, um. Audio settings on your computer? To see if that, you can reconnect your speakers. And I had to do so. Did we try calling John and Joanne to see if we can get them? Help?
Mr. Moderator, do you want me to put, um, the tech numbers in the, the chat in the Q and A? So folks who are have, will having trouble hearing right now, like, maybe they say, see people talking, but they can't hear it. They can call our IT staff and they can help that way.
I'll put on, make a sign if I can write backwards, check. I'll put, I'll make a sign if I can write backwards, check Q and A. As we know, the two of them are on, but they can't hear. Okay. So while during that break, I did take a moment to figure out how we're voting is going to go. So if you can't, if you can't hear me, call Q and A. They can't hear, so they don't know how to call.
Mr. Moderator, we've also been, we've also been reminded that there is a live transcription, so I will remind people in the chat in Q and A that they can use that as a resource too.
Well, you can't read this, can you? Pretty low tech. All right, so if those people type instructions in the Q and A. We're assuming that they know enough to go to the Q and A. I think we're we're pretty much back up to the town meeting members who are here. So that what we're going to do when we get back in, in a one minute, we're going to give thanks. If anyone's still having audio issues, raise your hand, John and Joanne, your hands are down at the moment, so I'm thinking that they're good to go. If anyone's useless saying, if you can't hear me, raise your hand, because they can't hear me. All right, so what we're going to do when we get back, we're going to vote on Ms. Preston's motion first, then Mr. Hyam's, then Lori Leahy's. And I'll explain which one, the Lori Leahy's again. And Mr. Warden's three motions. In order that I explain, Mr. Gersh, Lori Leahy's second. And Winell Evans, two. Then Patricia Wardens, then Al Tostes. I chose those because I grouped them into similar groups so that they speak to the same issues. So I'm going to assume that those two are back, so let's go back to the meeting and get going again. Take a so the first one we're going to revote is Ms. Preston's. And let's open the chat. Okay, so we're going to open the vote on Ms. Preston's amendment. Ms. Preston wishes to accessory dwelling unit in a garage or other accessory shall be at least 15 feet from the existing residential dwelling on the existing property. If you're in favor of Ms. Preston's amendment, please vote yes, one for yes, or vote two for no if you do not wish to have that restriction. If you can't do that, please use chat or text your vote to 617-575-9266. As soon as we get all on manual votes entered. Okay, all our manual votes are entered. And we can close voting. Ms. Preston's motion fails by a vote of 56 to 173. There was a question if we could speed up the voting by not running through the screens. Unfortunately, we can't do that. The enabling legislation requires us to show the screens, but we're going to run through them as quickly as we can. The next one we're going to vote on is Mr. Hyam's, Christopher Hyam. Mr. Hyam wishes to change, you have to get a special permit if your accessory dwelling unit is going to be within 10 feet of a lot line. If you're in favor of moving the by right, 10 feet of a lot line, you'll vote yes. If you're not in favor of moving it, you'll leave it where it is, six. You'll vote no. So right there, you receive 10. In the ARBs version, it says six feet right there. Mr. Hyam wants to change it to 10 feet. If we can enable voting. And as soon as we get all our manual votes in, Mr. Himes. We answered, Gabby. My one minute, okay, we're still entering manual votes. Okay, all our manual votes are in, we can close voting. Mr. Hyam's motion fails. 73 in the affirmative and 155 in the negative. It's a vote on Mr. Hyam's motion, and I so declare that ends the voting on his. Now we bring up Lori Leahy's. B, starting out with B1. Which one is it? This is Leahy. Unfortunately, I didn't let, bring them that way. Let's see, let's look at the three Lori Leahy ones. Not that one, the next one, that's Leahy one. That's Leahy two. And it must be L3. That's the one. So that's L3. So Ms. Leahy's third amendment, which you see in front of you there. Any residential district, an accessory dwelling is permitted as an accessory use in any single-family dwelling if all of the following conditions are met. So she's in her current, she's restricting it to R0 and R1 zones. If you wish to restrict ADUs to R0 and R1 zones, you'll vote yes. If you wish to have them as all R and B districts, as the ARB recommends, you will not vote for this. So if you're in favor of restricting to R0 and R1, you'll vote one, cast your vote. If you're against the restriction, you'll vote no. Or you can use the chat. And cast one if you, yes, if you wish it, and B, two, blah. On the chat, yes, if you wish it, two, no, if you do not wish it. This is on Ms. Leahy, so Ms. Preston has a point of order. Preston, can you hear us? We can hear you, Ms. Preston. Can you hear us?
Yeah, finally. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I couldn't even vote on my own amendment because I presume it was the lightning strike that interrupted a lot of the connections, though I was talking to everybody and I was on, I finally got on the, the Q and A page and explained that I couldn't hear anything. Still, I couldn't vote, and I was wondering what is, if some people can't vote because of that, it's okay, or what is the rule on this, please?
We took a, an attendance vote, and we thought we were back to the full strength we were prior to the lightning strike. And we had as many members on as we did then, unless we're mistaken. If you were unable to vote, you had the options of could you use the portal or you just didn't have audio?
Well, it was on and off. I didn't really have audio, but I was on Q and A and I explained that I was having a lot of trouble with the audio, and I talked to Julie about it.
Did you report her?
I really wanted to vote, and I was afraid I'd miss some votes. But
Well, frankly, Ms. Preston, I, I understand your problem and I have sympathy. Can you vote now?
Not on my amendment.
I know your amendment frankly had a vote of 56 in the affirmative and 173 in the negative.
That's different than having the right to vote. But anyway, yes, I can vote now, at least momentarily.
That's the best I can do for you right now, Ms. Ms. Preston. I'm sorry if you aren't able to vote on your amendment.
Then what do you do if you have a technical, technical difficulty?
You can, you can chat the vote in, you can text 617-575-9266. You can call Ms. Brazil.
I do.
Or if you can get in touch with Mr. Dennis Lowry or Andrew Willett or Chris Fickett. They can transmit the vote to us through the chat.
I did, but not in time.
I'm sorry about that.
So if there's a time limit, I think we should all know it.
There's been a time limit since the first meeting of a minute and a half.
No, time limit, time limit to report that you cannot.
It's that minute, that minute and a half. We originally were one minute and we extended it to a minute and a half, and we found in the first nine and a half meetings that that was sufficient. Of course, we've never had an outing of this nature, but we're sorry, we weren't able to vote on your amendment. And it's the best I can do, Ms. Preston, I'm sorry. Is there anything else?
That's enough, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I really value my right to vote, so.
We, I do too.
Okay.
And we don't want to disenfranchise anyone. That's why we've taken the steps we did and have, so we'll endeavor to get all of your votes from now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Ms. Marier, Terrence Marshall, Precinct 5. This might be self-explanatory, but I just wanted to pose the question for this amendment. Obviously, the amendment is, is posing that they would restrict it to Romeo 0 and Romeo 1 zones, but in zones that are two-family dwellings, there are legacy homes that are still standalone, single-family homes in those zones.
Right. It would be only the R1 and R0 zones where it would be allowed. If your single family is in a R2 or anything else, they would not be allowed there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Let's close voting on this article, on this motion. Hey, Leahy 3 fails 36 to 194. Okay, Leahy 3 fails on 36, affirmative, 194 in the negative. That's a vote, I declare it. That brings us next to Leahy 2. And Leahy 2, she wants to, only one accessory dwelling unit may be created on any lot regardless of the number of dwellings that exist on the lot. So only one ADU on a building, building lot. But that's Leahy 1. That one. Here we go. This is one we're voting on. This is Leahy 2. Only one accessory dwelling unit may be created on a lot regardless of the number of dwellings that exist on said lot. If you're in favor of this, you'll vote one. If you're against it, you'll vote two, no, one for yes, two for no. Chat your vote, yes or no, in, or text 617-575-9266, or call Ms. Brazil, 781-316-3071. Okay, all our manual votes are entered as soon as we get down to seven seconds, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Okay, all our manual votes are entered, soon as we get down to seven seconds, six, five, four, three, two, one. Let's close voting. Okay, Leahy two fails, and he voted sixty-two in the affirmative, a hundred and sixty-eight in the negative, so. It's a vote, and I so declare it on Leahy two. Next up is John Warden. It's to John Warden. Again, I didn't do it the same way. Nope, that's Laurie's. Let's look at John Warden's three votes. It's that one. Nope, not that one. That's number one. Let's try Warden, the next one. That's, that's W two, it's, let's try the next one. That's the one. Okay, so this is John Warden's motion, where he wants to amend section five point nine point two point B three, where no off-street parking spaces are required in connection with the creation, but if a tenant has a motor vehicle, they shall make provisions for off-street parking. So he wants to require off-street parking if the tenant has a motor vehicle. Let's enable voting on that one. That's W three, yeah. If you're in favor of Mr. Ward's amendment, to require off-street parking if the tenant has a motor vehicle, you'll vote yes. If you're against his amendment, you'll vote no. In favor of this amendment, you'll vote yes. If you're against it, you'll vote no on the portal, cast your vote, if not, chat it in, or text six one seven five seven five nine two six six. Okay, we have all our manual votes entered. And we can close voting. Mr. Warden's W three fails by a vote of forty-six, forty-seven in the affirmative, a hundred and eighty-two in the negative. That's a vote, and I so declare it, and I'm voting on Warden number W three. Next, we're going to go to Warden W two. On this one, if they are owned by a, if the ADUs are owned by a nonprofit or governmental entity, both the principal unit and the accessory dwelling unit are forever restricted as affordable units. So if you're in favor of that, you will vote yes, one for yes, if you're against it, you'll vote no. You can use the portal to cast your vote, one for yes, two for no, or chat it in. Or text six one seven five seven five nine two six six number. Okay, all our manual votes are entered. And we can close voting. Warden two fails by a vote of fifty-six in the affirmative, a hundred and seventy-three in the negative. That's a vote, and I so declare it. Next up X better is Warden one. Where he wants to restrict the size of a dwelling unit to one-third, the floor size of the principal dwelling unit, or seven hundred fifty square feet, whichever is smaller. So that's Warden one, yep. So if you're in favor of the restriction of the square footage of one-third to gross floor area of the principal, or seven hundred fifty square feet, whichever is smaller, you'll vote yes. If you are not in favor of that restriction, you will vote no. He wants to lower it from nine hundred square feet to seven hundred and fifty. So when you have a chance, use the portal, go ahead and vote yes or no, cast your vote, or chat it in. Yes or no, or text to six one seven five seven five nine two six six. Okay, we have all our manual votes entered. And we can close voting. That motion fails, I vote forty in the affirmative. And a hundred and eighty-seven into negative. So vote, and I so declare it on Warden one forty in the affirmative, a hundred and eighty-seven in the negative, that closes voting on that amendment. Next amendment up will be John Gersh's amendment. Mr. Gersh seeks to remove the ability to have an RDU in an accessory structure, so garages, et cetera. Mr. Gersh would just have it in the principal dwelling, he would strike out the accessory building being used for accessory dwelling unit. So would he, Mr. Gersh's amendment seeks to do that. He wants to, so limit that, you'll vote one for yes, cast your vote, or two, no, cast your vote, or chat it in. If you're having trouble using the portal, please use the Zoom to vote yes or no, or text it to six one seven five seven five nine two six six. That phone number should be burned into all of our memories by now. Soon as we enter all our manual votes. I'll enter it, okay, we can end voting. That amendment fails by vote of forty-seven in the affirmative, a hundred and eighty-one in the negative. That's a vote, and I so declare it on the Gersh amendment. Next amendment up will be Lori Leahy's remaining amendment. I think this is Leahy one. This amendment requires a sworn affidavit that it is going to be, who's going to be the owner, is going to live there, and as, as in front of you, I don't want to try and summarize, but I might not get it right. Requires owner occupancy. So if you're in favor of this amendment, you'll vote one for yes. If you're against this amendment, you'll vote two for no. So each year, the owner has to file an affidavit with the building department that is still owner occupied. So vote one for yes, two for no, cast your vote, or chat yes or no to the chat, or text it in. Six one seven seven five seven nine two six six. Okay, we've entered all our manual votes. And we can close voting. Miss Leahy's L one fails by a vote of fifty-two in the affirmative, one hundred and seventy-seven in the negative. That's a vote on L one. Fifty-two, one hundred and seventy-seven, it's a vote, and I so declare it. And that ends the voting of that amendment. Next up we have Miss Evans's amendment. Of course, I didn't label my paper ones the same way. Nope, the other one, I'm sorry. That one. And Miss Evans's amendment again requires an affidavit to the building inspector that it will be owner occupied. And must provide a evidence to the building department. In favor of that amendment, you'll vote one for yes, two for no. Or you can chat that in. So if you're in favor of Miss Evans's amendment regarding owner living in the that the owner will reside in either of the units, vote one for yes, we'll vote two for no if you do not want it, or text, chat it in, or text, yes or no. As soon as we enter our manual votes. Okay, all our manual votes are ended, are in, we can end voting. Seven's two fails by a vote of fifty-nine in the affirmative, a hundred and seventy-four in the negative. That's a vote on Evans two, so declare it. Soon as you get through the screens, we're going to vote on Evans one. Which restricts the use of short-term rentals in accessory dwelling unit. in accessory dwelling units. Requires them to lease for at least six months, so no Airbnbs. If you're in favor of this amendment, you'll vote one for yes, cast your vote, or no, cast your vote, or text or chat it in, 6175759266. The current amendment we're voting on is before you right now. And she wants to insert an accessory dwelling unit shall not be rented for a period of less than six months, rental shall be under written lease. If you're in favor of this, vote one for yes, or two for no, cast your vote. Chat it in, or text it. Okay, all our manual votes are entered. We can close voting. Amendment fails by a vote of sixty-nine in the affirmative, one hundred and sixty-one in the negative. That's a vote, and I sort of declare it on Ms. Evans' E1, sixty-nine in affirmative, one hundred and sixty-one in the negative. That closes that amendment, and that brings us to Patricia Warden's amendment. So Ms. Warden's amendment seeks to make either the principal unit or the ADU, whichever one is rented, shall be an affordable rent, as defined by the Arlington zoning bylaws. So she wants to make one of the units affordable at all point in time. If you're in favor of this, you'll vote one for yes, cast your vote, vote two for no, cast your vote, chat it in, or text it. 6175759266. Waiting for our manual votes, as they're all entered, which they are now. We can close voting. That amendment also fails, forty-nine in the affirmative, one hundred and seventy-eight in the negative. That's a vote on Ms. Warden's amendment. So declare it. Okay, so, so far, all of the amendments have failed, so we have now before said that the Tosti motion, which is a substitute motion, which would replace the ARB in its entirety, or we have the ARB motion, main motion is printed in the report. First, we're going to vote on the Tosti substitute. So if you're in favor of Mr. Tosti's substitute motion, you'll vote one for yes, if you're against the substitute motion, you'll vote two for no. You can chat your vote in, or text it to 6175759266. Okay, so you'll be able to vote, vote one for yes for the Tosti substitute, vote two for no, cast your vote. Or chat it in, or text. Or text 6175759266. So entering our manual votes at this point in time. We're getting lots of chat votes because of the delay of the system. So it's going to take a few more moments. Okay, all our chatted votes are entered, we can close voting. And Tosti amendment fails by vote of, Tosti substitute motion fails by vote of sixty-two in the affirmative, one hundred and seventy-five in the negative. That's a vote on Tosti substitute, so declare it. That brings us to the main motion of the ARB as printed in their report and as unamended by any of the previous votes. So we have now before some main motion by the ARB as recommended in their report.
Mr. Moderator, just a note.
Yeah.
I've corrected, I've corrected this vote to make it a majority vote and not a two-thirds vote as people had seen before.
Good, thank you very much, we appreciate that. So I hope everyone heard that, Mr. Kroski has made a correction to our automatic vocabulation. So it isn't now majority vote as as it should be. So if you're in favor of the ARB recommended vote as printed in the report, you'll vote one for yes. If you're against it, you'll vote two for no. You'll chat your vote in, or text it to 6175759266. You're still able to vote even though you're, we're looking at Mr. Kroski's screen, there we go. So your votes are still being tabulated, so go ahead and try and vote through the portal. One for yes in favor of the recommended vote, two for no. Chat it in, or text to 6175759266. Okay, all our text support votes are in. We can close voting. And the motion carries by a vote of one hundred and seven, one hundred and eighty-nine in the affirmative, T48 in the negative, that's a vote, and I sort of declare it, one hundred and eighty-nine to forty-eight. Twenty-six, vote one hundred and eighty-nine forty-eight, that's a vote, and I sort of declare it, and that closes Article forty-three. And we got ten more minutes, we can go to another article. Next article before us is Article fifty-four.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Mr. Foskett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, I have sent some, I have some modifications on Article fifty-four, they're basically administrative, and I sent a copy of the documents to Mr. Adam Kroski. And
Okay.
If you could, if you could show the red line, I would be in a position to easily describe the changes.
Okay. Very good, Mr. Kroski, can you open the article and show that red line that Mr. Foskett sent you? Yeah, there's everybody, hi. There's your team, folks, everybody working hard for us.
Okay, thank you very much. So
Mr. Foskett.
Mr. Moderator, Charles Foskett, Precinct Eight, and Chairman of the Finance Committee. So the first change is in the section that says voted, and this number, six hundred and seventy-one thousand four eighty-five, is the actual number that's in the Finance Committee report. And it should not have been changed, and somehow it got changed in the process. The second number, the second change is that this number should be, it was typographically misentered, it should be one hundred and twenty-two thousand two eighty-four, and it is transferred, not appropriated, because the appropriation is already in the six hundred and seventy-one thousand four eighty-five. If you can move down a little bit, Adam. These dates that were put in the document were not correct, so they're now corrected.
Where are they under number?
Under Arlington Police Patrol Offices Association, one, two, and three. They're two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty.
Okay.
And if you could slide down a little further, Mr. Kroski. Right there, please, and so this number, ninety-five thousand five sixty-eight, should be ninety-three thousand five sixty-eight. Again, it's typographical error. And if you could slide down a little bit further, please. And the number five forty-nine, three eighty-one, should be five forty-nine, two oh one.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Kroski, may I ask, Mr. Foskett, hold one second, these are all on the annotated warrant under red line? Is this slide on the annotated warrant?
They have not been posted yet.
Okay, can we get them posted tomorrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Foskett, I'm sorry for that interruption.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Article fifty-four reflects collective bargaining settlements negotiated by town management with significant effort over a long period of time. Despite the fact that you've seen some numbers changed from the printed Finance Committee report, the substitute motion does not change the total amount that we are appropriating in the budget. So the total budget that that the town meeting has voted previously remains the same. In summary, you're being asked to appropriate an amount into a reserve fund for collective bargaining. The settlements have been reached, much to the credit of both town management and union leadership, and we are redirecting the funds to meet the needs of each of the settlements, and appropriating the unused balance into a reserve fund to cover future settlements still being negotiated. In addition, the settlements reached since the start of town meeting were two, were two agreements, one before prior to town meeting, one was via an arbitration agreement with the police union, and another was via a negotiation with the library unions. Those settlement numbers were already in the police and library budgets that you previously voted. A very important point is that in addition to these funds, you are being you're being that's, excuse me, I just lost my place here. You're being exercised, you're being asked to exercise your authority and power as town meeting to affect two things. First of all, to appropriate the funds that have been outlined, but more importantly, to approve the collective bargaining agreements, which is a necessary condition under mass general law. Without town meeting approval, these contracts cannot become effective. The Finance Committee supports this amendment and the agreements as fair and beneficial to the town, and we strongly urge your favorable action on Article fifty-four as amended, as amended. As I noted, the settlement is the result of extensive effort by town management, and I hope, Mr. Moderator, that you permit Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director Poehler to explain the to explain the details, the objectives, and the philosophy applied in reaching these settlements. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, Mr. Poehler, do you wish to tell us anything?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager and Finance Director. Um, we have a pattern in place for FY twenty two for our settlements of a one point five percent collect, uh, cost of living allowance. And our settlements with the library and SEIU reflect those, as do the wage increases that we have here for our non-union and management employees. In each instance, there are, particularly with the library, there is a slight change in how they have spread out those wage increases. Putting some money instead to their longevity payments and taking a lesser across the board, the cost of living arrangement, but it still fits a pattern. The other thing that these collective bargaining agreements put forward is giving recognition to Juneteenth. Town meeting has already recognized this as a town holiday. But in terms of the benefits accrue to our workers, that is a matter of collective bargaining. And so in addition to town meeting voting on recognizing the holiday, we have to amend our collective bargaining agreements. And we've done that in the case of our library people to say that if that they will get a regular holiday and library may be closed on Juneteenth if Juneteenth falls from Monday through Friday, if it falls on a Saturday or Sunday, the library is open, and so those workers will get a floating holiday that they have to use till the end of the year. For SEIU, it's simply a holiday for them if it falls from Monday through Friday. The other thing that I want to point out, and Mr. Foskett mentioned, is that we have a collective bargaining arbitration award from the Joint Labor Management Committee, which represents a closing of the contract over a three-year period with our patrol unit within the police department. This was a significant and time-consuming arbitration. Ultimately, it came out in favor, I think, of the original, basically, the original terms that we had proposed. And so therefore falls in line with the other settlements that we've had with our other unions town. It provides a two-two-one collective cost of living increase over the years. It changed the step programs for the patrol officers to give them a couple of other steps, but keeping those other steps at sizes that kept it consistent economically with what our other unions got and made a few other changes to the contract for the period of FY nineteen, twenty, and twenty one in terms of just some other things in terms of sick leave use and so forth that the town had asked for and the arbitrator awarded to us. And so we we think all of these have resulted in good settlements for the town, and we urge your support for them. In addition to the support for putting money aside to settle contracts with our remaining unions. We still do not have contracts with police and fire going forward or with AfSK going forward. But we think with this pattern set in place, we'll be able to settle those contracts in the future. I would be happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Poehler. Just excuse me for one second, town meeting members. If Sean Keane is there, Sean, can you co-host Adam Karowski? We lost Adam temporarily, and he was our host. We need Sean to re-host him. Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment, to the article? We can still entertain speaking while we try to get Sean to co-host Adam. So if anyone wishes to speak to the article, now's your chance. I don't, I'm not showing anyone on my screen. I still have a screen so I can see who wants to speak. I'm not showing anyone. So what we're gonna do then is it's eleven o'clock. I'm gonna call for any notices of reconsideration. Because we can't seem to get Adam back in, and it's eleven o'clock, so we're gonna adjourn to the next meeting. Oh, Dennis is now host. I could actually take a vote. Dennis, can you make Adam host?
Yes, I'm doing that right now.
All right. Mr. Lowry is making Mr. Kroski a host, and Adam is gonna be able to bring up the vote on the article, because I don't see anyone who wishes to speak to it. Okay, so we're gonna take a vote on the collective bargaining. Article is printed in the Finance Committee report and as amended by Mr. Foskett this evening, which will show up on the interact, on the annotated warrant tomorrow. If you're in favor of the collective bargaining settlements, please vote one for yes. If you don't agree with them, vote two for no. You can chat your vote in, or you can text to six one seven five seven five nine two six six. While we wait to get our manual votes entered in the last few minutes, I just want to make one note to town meeting members and to the general public, as with, as we have done for the last several meetings, all of our resolutions in the high nineties, we're going to have a pro and a con speaker. Four minutes each to pro, the person in presenting it, and anyone who is opposed would be the con. They get to get up and give four minutes on each, and that's all the debate we'll have on those resolutions, and then we're gonna vote. So if anyone wishes to contact me to be on either side, go ahead, you know, my, my text, my, excuse me, you know, my email. So as soon as we get our manual votes, we're all set, we can close voting. And that motion passes, recommended vote is two hundred and three in the affirmative, three in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. So at this point, excuse me, we're gonna take any notices of reconsideration on any of the articles that we passed tonight, either forty three or fifty four.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Charles Foskett, Precinct Eight, Chair of the Finance Committee. I move, having voted in the affirmative, I move reconsideration, I mean, I move ask for, put on the reconsideration list for Article fifty four.
You're putting a notice of reconsideration. Thank you, sir.
Tongue tied.
Mr. Foskett has put in a notice of reconsideration on fifty four. If anyone else has notices of reconsideration, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. Now, Mr. Klein has a point of order. Mr. Klein, what's your point of order?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Klein, Precinct Ten. Just in light of all the the storm-related activities this evening, I just wanted to commend town staff on their, their handling of the situation and getting us back in order to continue the hearing this evening. It was much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the the kudos. Everyone did work hard to get us back in tonight. And town meeting members gave their part to and bearing with it. All right, we'll see everybody next Wednesday. Have a good Memorial Day. Thank you very much. And that's that.